Okay, I'll call this meeting to order if everybody would please stand for the invocation in place. Clank.
Board. Somebody by your head, please. Lord, we come to you tonight. And we ask you to pray for this country in mourning. This past week, or this week, the first successful political assassination took place in this country since 1968. Lord, we, this country really needs prayer, and we ask you to pray for it. Or ask you to, we're asking you to pray for it. Because the political climate in this country has got to change. And the moral compass of people in this country has got to change. We also ask you for, look over all of our first responders, our men and women overseas, and all the people that go in from this meeting. Pray for them to have safe travels. And, Lord, we just ask you to help us make the best decisions for this county, to move Columbia County forward in a successful manner. And all these things we ask in your precious name. Amen.
Amen.
Staff, at this time, we have the additions or deletions?
Yes, sir, we have two additions and one deletion. I'll start with letting Joel talk about the deletion.
Commissioner Murphy, commissioners, the item for doing a replat on the Oaks, which was, I think it's number two under public hearings, was for the replat. You tabled that to a time certain for tonight's meeting, and so we needed to leave it on the agenda. However, that staff review that we discussed has been ongoing, and we have determined that that matter is not ready to be heard, not even close. So what this means, if we delete it, we will have to re-advertise it if it ever comes back up. But that's really where we are with staff. We couldn't possibly make a recommendation, so we're asking for that deletion.
Staff, any, I mean, I'm sorry, commissioners, any questions on that for clarity? Everybody good?
And then, Mr. Chair, we have two additions.
Go ahead.
First one is BA 2558, allocate ship funds to pay remaining invoices for this fiscal year. And the second one is BA 2559, debt service payoff. In discussions with the clerk's office, we felt that these were time-sensitive and had to be done before the end of the fiscal year.
What was the second one?
Debt service payoff.
Okay, got you. All right.
Got all of the additions?
That's all of the additions, two, and then that one deletion.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended. Thank you.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, Waste Pro presentation. Right there. We're waiting to hear you.
You should have a clicker.
Doing something wrong.
Do you have the Waste Pro presentation? So you did not get it? We don't have your presentation. I apologize.
Does she want to continue without?
Is there anywhere we can get it? Yeah, it's on the backup chair.
But I have notes on it. I mean, I can do it, but I don't have copies for them.
You feel comfortable doing it, or do you want to just, I apologize for them, but I'll, I mean, I have no prob, when's our next meeting?
He probably need that to do your.
I should have transferred off our iPad.
David, did anyone transfer off the agenda page?
Was it emailed to you? I think it's not received.
Yeah, it's on the backup. We can pull it up.
Did you get it on your email? Is it on your phone?
He's gonna work some magic. He can do it. He starts clicking him fingers. You better watch out.
Mr. Chair, what I was gonna suggest is it wouldn't be out of order if you allowed a little time. We could move on to other parts of the agenda, see if we can, because I'm sure you would like to have your presentation.
I really would.
I would like for her to have it, too.
Give her that grace, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, so just have a seat right there, and we'll move on, and then as soon as David gets it figured out here, we'll help you out.
Okay, all right.
Do you have, do you have a copy in your email that you could email me?
I have.
You emailed it to me.
Pam, Pam would have had it and emailed you, actually.
Oh, here we go. I think we're getting there.
Oh, I saw something. It said Waste Pro. I apologize, it didn't come to my office, so David didn't get it.
No worries. Things happen. Mr. Chair, do you still want me to sit down?
Yes, but I'm trying to figure it out, and then I'm gonna, Karen? Do a couple of public hearings now.
Whatever you showed there a second ago, David, that looked like it might have been it.
Okay, we got it. Karen, where's Karen at? There's Karen, here, Ken's Karen, not here.
I ain't Karen.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We have one item for consideration tonight. It's a minor subdivision, SD 250 701. It's a two-lot, proposed subdivision on, it's in Commissioner Phillips' district. And the parent parcel had previously been split, which is the reason for them having to go through a subdivision process. So they're asking for two lots there on that. It's on Bethlehem, down off 778.
I would just fix to say this is the Bethlehem project area in there. Okay. Okay, before I open up the public hearing, Mr. Phillips, do you have any input or anything, or do you rather wait till after?
Well, I could wait till after, but if this is being done in the right manner, through the, the way we're supposed to do our government stuff, if it's done the way you're supposed to do it, I don't see a problem with it. But I'll talk to you, I'll talk a little bit after.
Okay. Okay, this time I opened up the public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak for or against this minor subdivision? Yes, sir. Come right on up. If you would, please, when you get here, just state your name and address and give it to the clerk.
How you doing? Eric Edwards. My address is 113 Corsica Way, Kissimmee, Florida, 34759.
Can you repeat your last name for us again?
Edwards.
Go ahead, sir.
Okay, so I'm here for the minor subdivision. I was told that I needed two hundred and fifty feet row French and had to be more than five acres. So me and my surveyor, Mr. Britt, Scott Britt, sent in the plats, and I was talking to Ms. Karen, Karen Smith, and I provided everything she needed for me to be able to do the lot split so we can build on the property.
So you're in support of it a hundred percent? You're the petition?
Oh, thousand percent.
Correct, okay. I just wanted to make sure. You was kind of quiet, stopping there, so that's fine. Okay, anybody have any questions, gentlemen? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else to speak for or against? Okay, not seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. What's the wishes of the board?
It's in my district. I say we go ahead and prove it, because I've seen other projects like this that people have that has enough land, and as long as it goes through and goes through all of the paperwork and everything that's supposed to be done, it should be okay. So I'll prove SD 250701.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second? Any further discussion? Favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right. You can head back south if you want to, or stay in the local holiday inn. Okay, and the number two was a, that's the one we took off, correct, Joe?
Yes.
Yep.
Dave? Chair, I believe the Waste Pro presentation is now on your screen.
Okay. All right, so we're going back to the Waste Pro presentation.
Okay, round two. Here we go.
Dana, just give your name to the clerk, which you can have, please.
Yes, sir. My name is Dana Williams. I'm the Director of Government Affairs for Waste Pro Florida. So, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, County Attorney, County Manager, Assistant County Manager, I'm accompanied today by Ralph Mills, he's our Senior Vice President, and Mike Sullivan, who is your local operations manager. Frank Kramer could not be here. Today, he is on his thirtieth wedding anniversary vacation. So we decided not to pull, yes, I know. We decided not to pull him off of that. I assume you have the presentation in front of you. Okay, perfect. All right. So, and I'm electronically challenged, so we're gonna do this. That's not what I wanted. Are you doing? Okay, if you can move to the second slide. One more. Yes, thank you. Okay. So today, we are presenting to you a proposal. And this is the outline that you see here. We'll be talking about our current agreement. We'll be talking about our proposal for possible adjustments for unusual changes in costs. We'll get into that. We'll go into a little bit about increases to the cost of doing business, which I know I'm preaching to the choir here, our proposed rate increase, and some local rate comparisons to view what the market is doing around North Florida. Next slide. Thank you. So I know most of you know who Waste Pro is, but I know that there's some people here that may not know the back history about Waste Pro. We are a Florida-based, family-owned, privately-owned, and operated company. Our owner, we've had the same owner since we started in 2001, John Jennings. He's a third-generation garbage man. And there is a succession plan in place. His son is currently our CEO, Sean Jennings. And John likes to use the phrase "hundred-year company." He does not have any intention on selling, going public, or anything like that. He fully believes in the power of a family-owned business and being closer to not only customers, but to his employees. We have been serving all of our community, most, we started in 2001, we've been serving since then. We operate in sixty-one of Florida's sixty-seven counties. And we have a hundred and twenty exclusive municipal franchises, of course, including Columbia County. As you know, your local office and hauling facility is located right here in Lake City, up on Waldo Street. In the area, we have additional facilities that range anywhere from Alatua to Tallahassee, Flagler County, and many, many others. We serve, you see the list of some of the municipalities that we service, and you can see it goes anywhere from Leon County, Tallahassee, and to Jacksonville, which isn't even on that list, but everywhere in between. And many, many of those service agreements, we've been community partners with for over a decade at least. Next slide. Thank you. Just as a reminder of a little bit of history, for those of you that don't know or may need a refresher, Columbia County, y'all went out for an RFP in October of 2021. And you had three bidders. We were one, of course, FCC and GFL. And you can see on this slide that GFL was a little over a hundred percent higher than our bid price, and FCC was almost a hundred and twenty-five percent higher than our bid price. And you can see what that, at that house count, that is the 2021 house count, not your current today, because we were keeping it at 2021, you can see what that did with your total per month cost, how that would have looked. Next slide, please. Thank you. So our initial, that initial contract started October 1st, 2021. I do want to remind you, though, we have actually been in Columbia County since 2006. We had the contract from 2006 to 2011. There was a five-year gap where the county chose a different company, and then you chose us to come back in 2016 till 2021, when this went out for bid, and we were awarded this bid. So the current contract is October 1st, 2021, through September 30th of next year, '26. In our contract, we have renewal terms of five years available with your approval, with this board's approval. And our service levels are one time a week residential garbage, one time a week residential yard waste, one time a week bulk, we pick that up with the garbage, two times annually, we'll pick up white goods, and then, of course, commercial is included in this contract. Next slide, please. Thank you. So as a performance overview, we took a look at how service has been, and we took a look at our involvement in the community. Working with staff, we determined we have about an average of only five complaints per month, which five out of twenty-four thousand five hundred services, I would say, is probably a good ratio. Ninety-nine point nine eight percent of those services are completed with no complaints, and we have never been fined by this commission. We are, we have been involved in your community projects and activities and events since the day we started with y'all. I listed just a few, some you're familiar, I'm sure, with Juana's Kids Day, and the touch truck they have, any of the community cleanups that you offer, back-to-school backpack giveaway, past Independence Day celebrations, and so on. Next slide, please. So in our contract, we do have a clause that allows for an adjustment for, quote, "unusual changes or costs." And this came about in many contracts across the state of Florida and beyond, in particular because of COVID. It was in contracts before, but it was really stressed once COVID hit. I know I am preaching to the choir when I say that our industry, as well as I know the county's course of doing business, we have seen substantial increases in doing business since 2021 due to the repercussions from COVID. And I hate to talk about COVID, because we all want to get it over with, and we wish it never happened. But it did have reverberating consequences throughout business community, even to this day. I know I hear municipalities that are having to order things early because they need to get on the waitlist to, because of delays and delivery. And so we're in the same boat as far as that goes. We understand how that feels. We're coming to you today twofold, and one is to ask for an adjustment in cost, or in price, excuse me, due to these unusual costs that we have incurred since the beginning of the contract. And I will remind you that the contract that we're in did, doesn't, is a fixed-price contract. So our price, when we started in 2021, is our price today. That was the wish of the commission at that time with that RFP that went out, and that's where we are right now. Next slide, please. This is just showing you some percentages that we've been dealing with of increases. I'm sure most of them are very comparable to y'all's increases. Vehicles, driver salaries, fuel, insurance, and driver salary, really, it should just, it should be driver salary and benefits that have increased. And just a reminder, the majority of our employees, as you may or may not know, are Columbia County residents. They are your constituents, they do live here, they work here, and they play here, including Frank Kramer. He's, I know all of you know, he's a longtime resident here. Him and his wife have raised their kids here and have nephews and other relatives that still live here. Next slide, please. Thank you. So as we were working with staff, and I will commend staff on a fantastic process to get to this point tonight, we, both parties, Waste Pro and staff, we were all aware that we had, this was a hurdle. This was, this was, how are we gonna get to where we all need to be and make it as palatable as possible to, to not only yourselves, but to the residents of this county? How can we get there? So we had multiple conversations, we had great discussions, it was a great process, and we worked really hard together to present a proposal to you that we felt would be workable for both the county and Waste Pro. So I do want to commend staff on that process. It was, it was, it was convoluted and complicated, but we did it, and we're very happy to have their support to be able to come to you with this proposal. Obviously, if there was any issues still lingering, staff would have informed us, and we would not be here before you doing this proposal. So what we're, what we're asking to be considered tonight is, I'll call it a step-up, step plan, as far as increases. We did not want to come to the county with one huge increase all at once. And we worked at, how can we, how can we get these increases in manageable bite-sized steps so that they can be, they can, they can be easier to manage? So in doing that, we're, we came, we're coming to you with this last year of the current contract that we're in. We're asking for you to consider fiscal year, October 1st, 2025. We're asking you to consider, we're, again, we're at 908 home, per home, per month currently. We're asking you to consider taking it to $11.02 per home per month. And then with the new renewal contract that we have the ability to have with your approval in our current contract, we would ask that that increase would be $12.96 per home per month, and then October 1st, 2027, $14.89 per home per month. This price, if you go back to, if you remember the slide where I had the bids from 2021, this $14.89 is still significantly less than both of the competition bids four years ago, from 2021. So $14.89, and the next highest bid was GFL at $18.42, again, four years ago, not currently. FCC was at $20.39. So you're looking at a range of difference in price compared to those back then, anywhere from $3.53 to $5.50 that we are still lower than in 2025, or, well, 2027 at that point. Next slide, please. Thank you. So this was, we put together this slide as a cost comparison of comparable contracts, whether it was service size, service levels. I do also know, my understanding is, is that staff also did their own due diligence and called, I assume, called the ones that we put in this slide, plus many more. And you can see, we provided to you, some of them, we were awarded the contract, some we were not. But that, the point of this slide is to show you the market pricing right now and to show you the comparison of what other municipalities are being charged currently. So you have Jacksonville, Jacksonville's divided into areas, it's, because it's so large, they're divided into different chunks of the area. So Jacksonville Area 2, Jacksonville Area 3, Leon County, which is the unincorporated Leon County outside of Tallahassee, Jacksonville Beach, and Clay County. But I know that staff also called several others, including, for example, Putnam County and some others, and I don't have that list of who they called. You're looking at, if you look at the old rates versus the proposed or new rates, you will see a significant difference. Jacksonville Area 3, the old rate was $14.30, and they had a sixty-eight percent, over sixty-eight percent increase. Had Jacksonville Beach that went from $16.89 to $32.67. So I think that this really shows how the market has really changed, and for whatever the reasons are, whether you blame it on the repercussions from COVID, or whatever all the other reasons are, this is unfortunately where we are today. And this is, this is what, if bidding went out today, these would be the comparable pricing that very, very strongly possibly could be coming towards Columbia County. I do want to point out one thing that I, that we all, staff and I, staff and myself and Frank, we also talked about. We know, earlier this year, you had a purchasing policy revision that went into effect regarding renewal contracts. And we feel like that, for this particular contract, not renewals going, not renewals in the future, but this, this particular time, this renewal, we feel like this, this policy, and I, we have already talked about it with staff, I'm not saying anything that staff isn't aware of, we feel like, Waste Pro feels like, this should not be applicable to us at this instance, because it was put into place after this contract, and this RFP was put out, like, three years later. So if we had known that this was gonna be, that if this purchasing policy was in place at that time, we would have bid differently. Not just us, I think any hauler at that time would have taken that into consideration and probably bid different, a little bit differently. So in this instance, we do feel like we, this should be grandfathered in as far as that purchasing policy. And then going forward, completely understand that purchasing policy is, it is what it is, and if that's what it remains to be, then, of course, we would honor that going forward. Again, I appreciate the ability and the opportunity to present to you today. Thank you so much, Super Tech, and for pulling that off. And of course, I'm available for any questions, as well as Mr. Mills.
Okay, board, any questions at this time?
I mean, I personally think you guys have done a great job. Even before this role, I was able to call and get things done, if my role was missed, or whatever the case may be, I was able to call and get something done. So I think you guys have done a really good job for the community. That's just my personal opinion, I don't know what everybody else feels, but I think you guys have done a good job, so I appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I definitely have no complaints with the service.
Thank you, Mr. Park.
And when there is a problem, y'all straighten it out.
Thank you. Yeah, and I know Frank, Frank has been a great leader of this division for twenty years, almost twenty years. He takes a lot of pride in making sure that customer service is first, and is very proud to say that, you know, we're a community partner for Columbia County, and that I hope that that shows how he feels about it, you know, that he takes it seriously.
And I can say also, Dana, you know, the, I've had issues, and, you know, they've been rectified, and I have no complaint on that there. But I was here during the time of these, quote, I mean, these RFPs, and it's a complex contract.
Yes, sir.
And it's, that's why, when we had the discussion Monday, that's why we put it down here as a presentation. And I know your numbers are your numbers here, and I know it's, I'm not saying it's unfair, it's just the waste business throughout the country is pretty open, I guess you'd say. When I say that, it's pretty visible to the point. But my point being this, I definitely, that's why it's not an action item. I, for one, I've got more detail. I'm gonna have staff run their numbers, bring me different equations, the way I do it, because I see what's here. I don't doubt a number here, but I definitely, on a contract of this size, there's no way I could make a decision tonight. And of course, that's why we staged the presentation the way it was.
Understood.
But we will, but we do realize this is something that we're not gonna be able to put on the back burner until January, nothing like that, too.
Yes, sir.
Because, you know, if the situation were to arise that y'all weren't to get the contract, I don't think anybody else was here during that time. It's a mess. It's a, it's a, it's a, that's right, that's our first term. Were you on the transition? Only young people. Young people weren't here.
Yeah, yeah, I see that.
You remember them calls, hey, they come to my house.
I would, I would like to echo everything. You've always been good, you took care of things we needed. And I'll go back to the past. And I'll go back to the past and say the other company done exactly what you're doing. And that's what it takes to keep a good business going in a local town like we have, people that's pretty close together. But I think before we make a decision, we need to get a little bit closer numbers and if we're going to have to bid it out, we just have to bid it out and you're going to have to buy that bullion again. But anyway, I appreciate you.
You might want to get your people snake boots. I don't know if you heard about this, I had, I had one guy didn't get his trash picked up.
Okay.
And he, they called me and they said, they said, well, he had to get it picked up. We picked up the whole neighborhood. I said, no, it didn't get picked up. And I was kind of upset a little bit. Lady calls me back and says, says, well, when he walked up there, there was a snake sitting on top of the trash and he wouldn't pick it up. I don't really blame him, to tell you the truth.
I mean, our hazards of the business.
Yeah, hazards of the business, so it's funny.
It is the fifth, the fifth most dangerous line of work in the world.
Just because of people running over.
Yeah.
My business.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, no, you're absolutely right about that. It is, people don't realize how incredibly dangerous it is. I mean, people just, people just know their garbage gets picked up, their yard debris gets picked up, they don't, I don't expect them to think about it, how does it get done? But when you start looking at the, how dangerous it is, and you're right, it has to do with people not paying attention and hitting our trucks or.
I catch myself going around them, you know, and slow, but still, I probably I'll just wait till they get on the, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah.
It's just so normal to see them, so.
Right, right, right.
Especially your driving district.
Mr. Chair, to follow up on a few points of Mrs. Williams raised, is your contract here is unique in that we did negotiate it in the aftermath, is it the aftermath or kind of in the death throes of COVID?
Yeah.
And we all knew, and, and we talked about it to the board and we presented it, we did put that provision in there so that it would be clear to people in the future. I think Commissioner Murphy is exactly right, though. Where we're at right now, if it's the pleasure of the board, refer this back to staff, see if staff will render a recommendation. I mean, I, I'm no good at math and I ran some quick numbers, a couple of these early bumps are pretty big. Am I understanding that after these mapped out bumps, it'd be 3% after that?
It would, it would be, yeah, yeah.
Okay, but it would, it would, because I had 21, 17, 15 in terms of those annual increases, they start to taper down, but then after these, it would drop it. Those are the kind of things that need to be negotiated and written into a proposed contract.
Right, right.
So if it's the pleasure of the board, you, you can't vote on anything, but if, if I'm hearing consensus, you want us to go talk, see if we come back with a formal staff recommendation in light of Miss, Mrs. Williams' presentation?
And, and I would also recommend each board member, you know, set time aside with staff, maybe set a day up where all of us can come in for a couple hours, whatever it may be, because it's, it's not, these numbers don't need to be out here. She's got numbers here in public, I give that. But these are somewhat rounded to the point. I shouldn't say rounded to the point, that's unfair, but I, I, there's room here. I've been in it long enough to know that. But my point is, is this, is that when we do these calculations, you know, it's, it's a lot easier to sit there and then we'll have, you know, our finance people there too, the, because you got to look at the big effect.
Well, we have an assessment we have to address.
It's a, you got an assessment, you got a guideline, so it's, it's a very complex.
But I, I brought up that point about the contract because she mentioned grandfathering. I'm of the opinion, your policy doesn't affect this contract at all because as she indicated, it was negotiated, signed, entered. So your policy for Waste Pro is that contract until it doesn't exist anymore, then you go back to your policy. So as long as we're still operating within the confines of what that contract allows, you're not violating any policy, you're not deviating from any policy, you're just doing what your contract says. I'll make sure that that's very, very clear for everybody involved. So there's no weird negotiations here, the contract literally calls for these negotiations to happen.
I guess David, Kevin, y'all are going to have to block out some time sooner than later. Let me get my knee replaced on 29th, after that, I'm good to go.
So should these negotiations happen after the surgery?
They got to wrap around my knee. Thank you, Dana.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you.
All right. Mr. Craft, front and center.
Thank you.
Since these are the second public hearings, I'll try and make them as painless as possible. All right, here we go. Resolution number 2025 R-43, annual millage rate. This is the second public hearing to adopt millage rate for fiscal year 2526. We have to say this officially, the taxing authority is the Columbia County Board of County Commissioners. Your gross taxable value as certified by the property appraiser is 4 million, I'm sorry, 4 billion 883,000, 1, 883,192, I can't even read it. 1,926. Current millage rate is 7.8150. Proposed millage rate is 7.8150. Rollback rate would have been 7.3515, or this is a 6.37% increase over the rollback rate. So I need to read the resolution into the record. Then you can open for public comment and take public comment. So the resolution is.
David, would you like me to read it since you're not seeing it so well?
Uh, yeah, because I'm not getting it on the right page.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Joel.
Resolution number 2025 R-43, a resolution of the Columbia County Board of County Commissioners of Columbia County, Florida, adopting the final levying of ad valorem taxes for Columbia County for fiscal year 2026, providing for an effective date. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners of Columbia County, Florida, on September 18th, 2025, adopted fiscal year millage rates following a public hearing as required by Florida statutes, section 200.65. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners for Columbia County, Florida, held a public hearing as required by Florida statutes, section 200.065. And whereas the gross taxable value for the opening, for the operating purposes not exempt from taxation within Columbia County has been certified by the Columbia County Property Appraiser to the Columbia County Board of County Commissioners at 4,683,192,926. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Columbia County Board of County Commissioners of Columbia County, Florida, that, one, the fiscal year 2025, 2026 operating millage rate is 7.8150 mils, which is greater than the rollback rate of 7.3515 mils by 6.37%. Two, the resolution will take effect immediately upon its adoption. Be it further resolved by the board, that, that if the final taxable value on the tax roll as certified by the property appraiser is at variance with the value initially certified by more than 1%, the chairperson of the Board of County Commissioners is authorized to adjust the above millage levies to bring in the same funds as contained in the approved budgets duly adopted at a public hearing the 18th day of September, 2025.
All right. With that being said, I'll open the public hearing on resolution 2025 R-43. Anybody here to speak for or against? Not seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. What's the wishes of the board? What's the wishes of the board?
So we're just making this the same, right? We're not changing anything, it's going to stay the same, right?
Stay in the same.
Stay in the same. All right, my bad, I was off the cough guard. Motion, we approve resolution 2025 R-43.
Got a motion? Got a second? All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed. All right, David?
Madam Clerk, would you please notate the time resolution was adopted? So the next one is resolution 2025 R-44. This is the same type of resolution is for the MSTU or the industrial park millage rate. This is the second public hearing, the taxing authority is the Columbia County Board of County Commissioners. The gross taxable value is 2,716,408 for next fiscal year. The millage rate is zero currently. There is no millage rate, this is the first time you're adopting the millage, proposing the millage rate to be the same as the county's millage rate for this year, which is 7.8150. Again, the rollback rate is zero, so it's 100% increase. And we need to read the resolution into the record.
Would you like me to read it?
Yes.
Resolution number 2025 R-44, a resolution of the Columbia County Board of County Commissioners of Columbia County, Florida, adopting the final levying of ad valorem taxes for the municipal service taxing unit, Columbia County Industrial Park, for fiscal year 2026, providing for an effective date. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners for Columbia County, Florida, on September 18th, 2025, adopted fiscal year millage rate, fiscal year final millage rates following a public hearing as required by Florida statutes, section 200.65. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners for Columbia County, Florida, held a public hearing as required by Florida statutes, section 200.065. And whereas the gross taxable value for operating purposes not exempt from taxation within Columbia County has been certified by the Columbia County Property Appraiser to the Columbia County Board of County Commissioners as 2,716,408. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Columbia County Board of County Commissioners of Columbia County, Florida, that, one, the fiscal year 2025, 2026 operating millage rate is 7.8150 mils, which is greater than the rollback rate of zero mils by 0%. Two, the, the resolution will take effect immediately upon its adoption. Be it further resolved by the board, that if the final taxable value of the net, on the net, on the tax roll as certified by the property appraiser is at variance with the value initially certified by more than 3%, the chairperson of the Board of County Commissioners is authorized to adjust the above millage levies to bring in the same funds as contained in the approved budgets duly adopted at a public hearing the 18th day of September, 2025.
Okay. This time I'll declare the public hearing open for resolution 2025 R-44. Anybody here to speak for or against? Not seeing none, I'd clear public hearing closed. What's the wishes of the board?
I make the motion to approve resolution 2025 R-43.
Second. Got a motion and a second? All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed.
Madam Clerk, please notate the time.
I, I might have, I might have made a mistake there, I said 43 instead of 44.
No, you said 47.
Didn't I say 44? I thought you said 44.
For one time, you got it wrong.
All right, got it good. Turn that here and make it up.
So the next one is resolution 2025 R-45. This is the actual adoption of the fiscal year 2526 budget. Again, we're going to open the public hearing, taxing authority is the Columbia County Board of County Commissioners. And I'd like to have Joel reading to the record, 2025 R-45.
Resolution number 2025 R-45, a resolution of the Columbia County Board of County Commissioners of Columbia County, Florida, adopting the final budget for fiscal year 2026, providing for an effective date. Whereas the Columbia County Board of County Commissioners of Columbia County, Florida, on September 18th, 2025, held a public hearing as required by Florida statutes, section 200.065. And whereas the Columbia County Board of County Commissioners of Columbia County, Florida, set forth the appropriations and revenue estimates for the budget for fiscal year 2026 in the amount of 214,833,415. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Columbia County Board of County Commissioners of Columbia County, Florida, that, one, the fiscal year 2026 final budget as amended to be adopted; two, this resolution will take effect immediately upon its adoption duly adopted at a public hearing the 18th day of September, 2025.
And as you can see, the next page on your screen is the ad that we ran in the paper. It is pretty much the same as it's drawn every year, it's dictated by law. The general fund is 78,478,789. Special revenue funds, which is a whole bunch of different funds, 69,000, 69,956,352. Debt service fund is 181,990. Capital projects fund, 54,574,392, that's all three of the capital project funds. The enterprise funds, landfill facilities, 17,744,250. Brand's model of all of our funds, we have 18 funds, this year, 214,850,583. Different about the presentation this year, DOR wanted us to include both the MSTU millage rate and the ad valorem millage rate in this particular ad. Millage rates, this year, they're both the same, you know.
And just for the record, the 54,000 is 54 million.
54 million, I'm sorry.
Okay, at this point in time, I'll declare the public hearing open for resolution 2025 R-45. Anybody here to speak for or against? No input. I'll declare the public hearing closed. Wishes of the board?
I move that we pass 2025 R-45.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. David, if I may, I'm going to stall you for just 30 seconds here. I asked a friend of mine, Kelly, if you would make your way up here, please. We just a public, we just adopted the public, I mean, the budget for 2526. And I'd like to commend Robbie Hollingsworth, he, Robbie come forth here a couple of years back and really got us on the right track of supporting our local veterans. And Kelly, I, I didn't tell none of the board members, they're all looking at you like, who's this guy? But, uh.
Some of you guys know me.
In our budget, we did something this year that I'm super, super proud of. We made a full-time position for this veteran service officer. And the story that Kelly shared with me, I felt like the public need to hear this just to show that the gentleman that has been put in this place, the, the distance, and I know each one of you guys got the emails and the calls that I probably did, and, but this, I just thought this, me knowing Kelly personally, it was just a moving story and I felt like the public need to hear this. He's not a long talker, so, but I think it's instrumental in hearing it. Go ahead, please, Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Kelly Lucker, my address is 169 Southwest Sherlock Terrace here in Lake City. Forgive me if I sounded a little hoarse and working through a cold. Good afternoon, I'm Kelly Lucker. I'm a retired US Army paratrooper with 30 years of service and multiple deployments. But this story isn't about me. My father, Jack Lucker, was also a retired US Army veteran and a special forces brig brigade with multiple deployments in Vietnam. He was also a combat diver. During his deployments, he was tasked with diving the rivers of Vietnam to assist with the recovery of downed aircraft and equipment, as well as clearing bridges of demolitions and even setting demolitions against enemy forces. My father retired in 1973, it's a long time ago. After retirement, he was diagnosed with skin cancer due to his contact with aircraft fuel in the rivers and other contaminants in the jungles of Vietnam like Agent Orange. My father passed away June, excuse me, June 1995, at the young age of 60, due to his cancer. The VA never acknowledged his cause of death was service connected and we fought it for 30 years. We had applied multiple times over the past 30 years in hopes that the VA would acknowledge that in their error and compensate my mother for her loss to no avail. Then we met Mr. Ron Beasley. He listened to our story and reviewed the case. Mr. Beasley immediately began acting as an advocate for my mother and filed an appeal. The appeal was denied. He then requested a higher level. Review citing previous cases and decisions for justification in his request. Recently, very recently, and due to Mr. Beasley's commitment to the case, the VA has acknowledged after 30 years that my father's death was service connected. He's also, and, and the VA has also compensated my mother for the past 30 years for her loss. That's substantial, gentlemen. Mr. Ronnie Beasley, Ronnie Beasley is the most professional and strongest advocate for the veterans of Columbia County. I encourage you to keep him on. I encourage the board to keep Mr. Beasley on as a permanent veteran service officer for all of us. He's done more for my, he's done more for my family in the past 30 years than any VSO has done over the last 30 years. I do have one other request, gentlemen. Also request that the board approve an installation of a flagpole on the VSO office so the US flag can be flown above their office. Thank you for your time, Mr. Chairman. I yield back to the board.
Well, I appreciate it, Kelly, and I appreciate your service and naturally to your father, too. And Robbie, you know, when you stood up there several years ago, it, this is a great investment and it's just, we don't get praised very much and I'm not looking for praise, I'm just glad for what your mother's received and it's, he didn't die in vain, so that's great, that's great. great. That's great.
And I think a flagpole can be.
I think, I think we can handle that.
We'll get it up there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about that, David, but I felt like it was worthwhile. You're good.
So the next one is 2025 R-46, adoption of 2025-26 budget. The MSTU Columbia County Industrial Park. The taxing authority is the Columbia County Board of County Commissioners for the MSTU. And if Joel would like to read that into the record?
Sure thing. Resolution number 2025 R-46, a resolution of the Columbia County Board of County Commissioners of Columbia County, Florida, adopting the Municipal Service Taxing Unit Columbia County Industrial Park final budget for fiscal year 2026, providing for an effective date. Whereas the Columbia County Board of County Commissioners of Columbia County, Florida, on September 18th, 2025, held a public hearing as required by Florida Statute, Section 200.065. And whereas the Columbia County Board of County Commissioners of Columbia County, Florida, set forth the appropriations and revenue estimates for the Municipal Service Taxing Unit Columbia County Industrial Park budget for fiscal year 2026 in the amount of 20,168. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Columbia County Board of County Commissioners of Columbia County, Florida, that, one, the fiscal year 2026 final budget as amended be adopted. Two, the resolution will take effect immediately upon its adoption duly adopted at a public hearing the 18th day of September, 2025.
Okay. This time I'll open the public hearing for Resolution number 2025 R-46. Anybody here to speak for or against? Not seeing none, I'd clear the public hearing closed. Wishes of the board?
I make the motion to approve 2025 R-46.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed. All right.
Madam Clerk, please notate. Thank you very much.
I think that's it. Thank you, David.
Make a motion we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Free the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye, aye. Make a motion we adopt for second.
Got a motion to adopt and second. All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed. All right. Mr. Ford?
Chairman, I'm gonna ask you to, to cancel this discussion for tonight. I'm waiting on some further information. Met with staff earlier today, and they agreed to provide some more information on this. I'd like to wait till we get that information.
Okay. Well, the, I appreciate that, Commissioner Ford, and then I personally would be getting, we had some discussion during our review Tuesday, I mean, I'm sorry, Monday, and, but I've, since then, I've come up with a couple of things I'd like to kind of ask for clarity too. Definitely time to look at it, but good deal. But we can definitely, Joel, that's the discussion action. So just push, what are we doing this?
He was the proponent of the item. He's asking to push it off. You don't need to take action on it.
Okay, okay. Don't have to take it. I just want to make sure we didn't table it, so to speak. Okay. Okay, moving on to the zoning application notification policy. I've noticed several people in the audience, and I know why they're here relating to this situation here. But real briefly, Melissa is our building and zoning, I'm gonna call her the guru, because that's who I go to all the time, so I don't know all the things. But the, but Melissa, I went to Melissa and asked her, hey, how do we get better notified of these type of situations that do not come before the Board of County Commissioners? And I'd like for her to explain it. I think I've already lived it, that it's working great, but it's, Melissa, if you don't mind, please, just state your name, position, and all that. I know I didn't get it right.
My name's Melissa Garber. I work for the Building and Zoning Department as the Assistant Building and Zoning Director. So Tim came to
You gotta speak up louder now, because I know you can talk louder than that.
I'm not yelling at my kids. So I, Tim came to me last week about an issue, and I understood the issue. So I had a suggestion. I worked with Patrick in IT, and we had a solution and got it rolled out pretty quickly. What we did is, again, so the process that we came up with, and I ran it by Tim, he seemed to think it was a good idea. So what'll happen now is when a zoning application is submitted, staff will review the application, determine what the request actually is, and if they're even eligible for the request. After that, as they go through the request, they'll make notes of the request and get it ready for notification purposes. After that, they'll determine what district it belongs to. If it's in your district and your district only, then you will receive the notification. So you won't be receiving a million notifications of every application we receive. It'll only be in whatever's in your district. Now, there are some that may have multiple parcels. Occasionally, there may be one that kind of borderlines both districts. We may or may not miss that, so I can't, I don't have a solution for that at the time, but we'll do our best not to miss anything on your, either way, someone will be notified. And then beyond that, there is a copy of the email there. It's a little difficult to see in the slide, but if you can see it at all, it tells you what the application is, it's applied for, who's applied for it, and gives you advice, the advice to go ahead and contact us if you have further questions. So that's the follow-up, is you contact the Building and Zoning Department.